Please rise with the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
At this time, the clerk call a roll.
Counselor Vido, absent. Counselor Arizaneda.
Present.
Counselor Recupero.
Yes.
Counselor Garcia. Counselor Vega Maldonado. Counselor Robinson.
Yeah.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Brown. Here.
And Counselors Abbott.
Present.
Ten members present, one absent, Mr. Chairman.
At this time, we will now move on to, I have a motion from Counselor Robinson.
Take out of order, number seven, actually, from the Traffic Commission. It relates to a matter from the school department. And there is a letter. Dr. Clark, have?
We have a motion to move out of order. The, a letter from the Parking Commission on the most recent meeting. And I have a letter from the school superintendent, Dr. Almi Albeida, which I will now read. On the street parking in the city of Williams Middle School until the end of the school year. Commission members, I would like to respectfully request that the Traffic and Parking Commission consider allowing Chelsea Public School staff to park on residential streets in the vicinity of the Williams Middle School until the end of the school year. As you know, we have actively and eagerly worked to reopen schools after a long year during which all Chelsea Public Schools have been widely studying remotely during the COVID-19 pandemic. We anticipate that over half of the students will return an in-person learning and nearly all personnel will return to our school buildings. Unfortunately, the school, the state's work on Route One Viaduct has not been completed and two of the traditional parking lots across from the Williams Middle School remain closed. This is creating a steep decrease in the amount of parking available for our staff. We are planning to allow teachers and staff to park on both of the school's asphalt play areas accessible from Walnut Street and Arlington Street and are in contact with nearby property owners to see if they have space available. But know that these options combined will not be sufficient for staff vehicles. As a result, we would like to request a temporary relax on the residential parking requirements for vehicles that have a CPS stick, parking sticker near the school, including Walnut Street from Sixth Street to Everett Avenue, Fourth Street from Route One to Arlington Street, Arlington Street from Fifth Street to Heard Street, the recently reopened public area underneath Route One Viaduct between Second Street and Everett Avenue. Thank you for your consideration of our application. Sincerely, Dr. Almi Albeida.
And a suspension if there are no objections to any of the other orders.
Adopt the, oh.
Yeah.
There's a motion to adopt the, the letter from the Parking Commission in, in front of you. It was part, it was taken out of order and the Traffic Commission recommended that we allow a temporary suspension of resident-only parking around the Williams Middle School until June 30th, I believe. Okay. A yes vote will approve the vote by the Parking Commission, a no vote will send it back, the whole packet. Counselor Brown.
The enforcer identified this.
There is a sticker on the window of each vehicle from the school that will have a, let me see, it says a.
Chelsea Public Schools.
Chelsea Public Schools sticker on the vehicles pertaining to the city, those employees.
And it's from 10 hours?
They're daytime parking, not, this does not include overnight parking.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no other public comments or any speak, or are there any questions by the colleagues? Would the clerk call a roll?
Counselor Vido, absent. Counselor Arizaneda.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero.
Yes.
Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Vega Maldonado.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
And Counselors Abbott.
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent.
We will now move on to memorials and celebratory resolutions. I have a celebratory resolution introduced by Counselor Vega, Vega Maldonado regarding April as National Arab American Month. The Chelsea City Council recognizes April as National Arab, Arab American Heritage Month and for over a century, Arab Americans have been making valuable contributions to virtually every aspect of American society in medicine, law, education, business, technology, government, military service, culture, and since migrating to America, men and women of Arab descent have shared their rich culture and traditions with neighbors and friends while also setting fine examples of model citizens and public servants. They brought with to, with them to America their resilient family values, strong work ethic, dedication to education, a diversity in faith and creed that have added strength to our great democracy. And the history of Arab Americans in the United States remains neglected or defaced from their conceptions of bigotry and anti-Arab hate in forms of crimes and speech. And Arab-American issues such as civil rights abuses, harmful stereotyping, and bullying must be combated in the forms of education and awareness. They join all Americans in the desire to see a peaceful and diverse society where every individual is created equal, treated equally, and feel safe. And their incredible contributions to the heritage of Arab Americans have helped us build a better nation. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council acknowledges April as the Arab American Heritage in the city of Chelsea and recognizes the contributions, cultures, and traditions made by the Arab community. Be it further resolved that the Chelsea City Council acknowledges, empowers, and supports all city employees of the Arab community and will continue to educate and raise awareness to create a diverse and peaceful city of Chelsea. What is the wish of Counselor Vega Maldonado?
I make a motion to accept under suspension and if there are no objections, can I speak on it?
Counselor Vega Maldonado asks that we accept this under suspension unanimously. You have the floor, Counselor.
National Arab American Heritage Month is a time for celebrating the history, contributions, and cultural of the diverse population of Arab Americans. As the Arab community continues to grow in Chelsea, we need to embrace and celebrate their culture. In 2019, Rashida Tlaib, is that how you say it? Issued a congressional resolution for National Arab American Heritage Month to recognize on a national scale, though it was recognized unofficially by some schools and members of the Arab American community for many years before. Representative Rashida, a first-generation American shared. It is my hope as a strong and proud Arab American in Congress that our nation can uplift our contributions in the United States by supporting Arab American Heritage Month. Our history in the U.S. is rooted in our love for freedom and equality as well as access to opportunities to help our neighbors thrive. As a woman of color, I share that sentiment and I value it, and which is why this is important to me.
Any other counselors would like to speak on this? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next memorial, rather, the next celebratory resolution.
The next celebratory resolution is introduced by Naomi Zabat and all counselors, all three. The observance of Holocaust Remembrance Day, Yom Hashoah, in the United States of America and around the world on April 7th to the 8th, 2021. And whereas from 1933 to 1945, almost 6 million Jews were murdered in the Nazi Holocaust as part of a systematic program of genocide. Whereas millions of others considered damaged gay people, people with disabilities, from so-called ethnic minorities, political and religious adversaries, and prisoners of war also perished as victims of the Nazi regime. And whereas 1.5 million children, from newborn infants to 17-year-olds, were murdered by Nazi Germany and its collaborators. And whereas kinden transport, children's transport, was a rescue effort which brought thousands of refugee Jewish children without their parents of safety in Great Britain. Whereas the residents of the city of Chelsea and everyone around the world should always remember the atrocities committed by the Nazis so that such horrors are never repeated. And whereas the year 2021 marks the 88th anniversary of the beginning of the genocide of European Jews and one of the darkest, most murderous moments in history. Whereas indifference to genocide cannot be tolerated, Holocaust remembrance imposes a moral obligation to speak out. And whereas the people of the city of Chelsea should continually rededicate themselves to the principle of equal justice for all people. Whereas we remember and give thanks for those who save lives often at risk of their own, teaching us how in the darkest night we can light a candle of hope. And whereas Jewish resistance against antisemitism and Nazi oppression occurred in every way imaginable, ranging from bold acts of defiance and altruism to armed resistance. Whereas Jewish women played a crucial role in various resistance activities as leaders of resistance groups as well as in aid and rescue operations as carriers and fighters. Whereas Holocaust Remembrance Day, known as Hebrew as Yom Hashoah, is a day set aside for remembering the victims of the Holocaust and for reminding all Americans and people around the world of what can happen when bigotry, hatred, and indifference reign. Whereas on this Yom Hashoah, we commit ourselves to one simple act, yisqar, remember. May the souls of the victims be bound in the bond of everlasting life. And whereas internationally, Holocaust Remembrance Day is observed this year on the 26th day of the Hebrew month of Nisan, from sundown on April 7th to sundown on April 8th, 2021. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council commemorate the observance of Holocaust Remembrance Day in the city of Chelsea, April 7th to the 8th, 2021. And be it further resolved that the Chelsea City Council acknowledges the theme guiding the Holocaust remembrance and education in 2021 is facing the aftermath recovery and reconstitution after the Holocaust. It focuses on the measure taken in the immediate aftermath of the Holocaust to begin the process of recovery and reconstitution of individuals, community, and system of justice. Integral to the process of reconstitution was the accurate recording of the historical account of what happened before and during the Holocaust. Challenging the denial and distortion of these historical events was interwoven in the process of recovery and reconstitution. The theme examines the contribution of the responses to the victims of the Holocaust and, and of the survivors to addressing the needs of the contemporary world and to the historical record of the Holocaust. Against the global context of rising antisemitism and increasing levels of disinformation and hate speech, Holocaust education and remembrance is even more urgent, as is the development of a historical literacy to counter repeated attempts to deny and distort the history of the Holocaust.
Counselor Zabat, what is the wish of the council?
Accept under suspension if there are no objections and speak on it, please.
Seeing no objection, you may speak.
Thank you. I would just like to repeat what was written in the resolution, which is that we, the people of the city of Chelsea, should continually rededicate ourselves to the principles of equal justice for all people and remember that this, that this occurred and to let it never happen again in any way to any people throughout the world, throughout the country, throughout the city, in your neighborhood, wherever it exists. Stand up for your rights and the rights of everybody around you. Thank you.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Ms. President. I also like to echo those sentiments. We should always have these discussions of what happened and the tragedies that happened. And one of the good reasons why we have these times of remembrance and celebration, these thoughts and these incidents that happened, to ensure us that the import, the importance of the Holocaust is always remembered, what tragedies and what death that occurred. So we should not forget, but we should also learn from what happened so we can be aware and mindful. Thank you.
Anyone else?
If I may speak from the chair, if there's no objections. I had this conversation with the council and I want to appreciate that she brought this up to our attention and to have this adopted. And the private story that I shared with her is that most of you know that recently I had just come back from visiting my father's home country of Argentina and during that stay, had visited Buenos Aires. And one of the things that I did was that I had visited the Metropolitan Church of Buenos Aires, which was the church where Cardinal George Borgedio was the attended mass or presided over masses there. He, of course, was the one who then went on to become Pope Francis. So prior to becoming the Pope, this is the church, the main church of Argentina, the Catholic Church. And why this, I bring this up is because when I visited the church to visit the Pope's, the Pope's previous, you know, church before, was that there was a part of the church in the chapel in there that had a mural with, it was a mural dedicated to the Jews of Argentina and worldwide. It had the writings in a, in a prayer book that was salvaged from a concentration camp from Auschwitz and other letters. And it was a response to, in 1993, a bombing by terrorists to the embassy, the Jewish embassy in Buenos Aires. I think it's striking, again, that Christians, Catholics of Argentina, wanted to make a statement that any sort of this sort of violence towards the Jews were not to be accepted, they were to be condemned, and as a way of unification, decided to play, put a homage in their church. It was the first time that this sort of dedication was ever done in any Catholic church around the world. And it remains so for many years, up until recently, where I am now told that a church in Berlin recently did the same thing. So now there are only two churches in the whole world that have murals dedicated to the, our Jewish brothers and sisters. I say that because, of course, there is a common lineage, heritage there as far as faith goes and a branch. So I want to thank the, my colleague for bringing this up, but also to remind everyone that, once again, the famous line is, we need to stand up for each other because otherwise there will be no one left when they come looking for you. Thank you. We'll now read the next resolution, which is the resolution introduced by Counselor Robinson and Counselor Zabat regarding Earth Day. Whereas Earth Day is first commemorated on April 22nd, 1970, the late Senator Gaylord Nelson, the founder of Earth Day, called on the people of the United States to hold elected officials accountable for failing to adequately protect the health of people and the natural environment. After witnessing years of environmental neglect, millions of Americans of all ages, walks of life, and political affiliations gathered in cities across the nation on the first Earth Day to demand basic protections of our planet and to commit to leave behind a healthier world for the next generation. Earth Day unites people who have been fighting against oil spills, polluting factories and power plants, raw sewage, and toxic dumps, and the loss of wildlife and other environmental ills. Earth Day is an annual event created to promote environmental citizenship and action year-round. The first celebration of Earth Day was the largest environmental grassroots event ever held at this time and was widely credited for launching the modern environmental movement. The voices of inaugural Earth Day participants galvanized in unparalleled period of legislative and grassroots activity that changed the way the, we interact with the environment, leading to the creation of the Environmental Protecting Agency, the passage of legislation such as the Clean Water Act, the Clean Air Act, and the Endangered Species Act. By 1990, Earth Day was celebrated, celebrated, rather, globally with 200 million people in 141 countries participating in Earth Day events. New and continuing challenges, including climate change, polluted oceans and waterways, loss of forests, wetlands, and other wild half habitats, reinforce the need for adequate protections for air we breathe, the water we drink, the land we inhibit, and the animals we live alongside. The American Public Health Association declared 2017 the Year of Climate Change and Health because changes to our climate are harming Americans' health and safety, including respiratory allergies and asthma. Earth Day reaffirms our national responsibility to the global effort to combat change and protect our planet. Earth Day reminds us the need to expand environmental and climate literacy, not only strengthening in environmental and climate protections, but also to accelerate development of green technologies and the creation of green jobs. Dear fellow, let it be resolved that the Chelsea City Council wished to go on record as recognizing April 22nd as Earth Day in Chelsea and would like to encourage our residents to participate in community programs offered so as to make Chelsea a better place to live in. Introduced by Counselor Robinson and Counselor Naomi Zabat. What is the wish of the board?
Adopt this unanimously under suspension if there are no objections.
Seeing no objection. Counselor Zabat, you have the floor.
I would just like to say and encourage everybody to see every day as Earth Day, not just one particular day. Because we only have one Earth, as far as we know, so treat it well. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson.
Just, I'll be very brief. Just over the years, April has been a very important month here in the city of Chelsea, where people would get together and go out and clean certain sections of the city. Over the last year and possibly this year, we're unable to do that. But I would encourage everybody to just go out in front of your house and clean out in front of your house. It actually, for me, it breaks down to education. And I think that we need to focus on educating our community, the importance of taking care of our community by cleaning up our community. Thank you.
Counselor Recupero and Counselor Brown.
Within my lifetime, I seen the change in, in our, in our world as it is. And I hope that the next generation that comes will save our planet. They'll stop all this. There's no more green space, there's chemicals everywhere, and the food we eat's got chemicals, everything we do. So I, I hope within the next two, three generations, the world will be a better place. But if it keeps going the way it is, I doubt it if it will be. It will be even a worse place because the world is being run by greed and money. And money would always win over anything. So it's up to us, especially the younger generation, for them to make sure that they don't let greed kill our planet, that they have some place for their grandchildren and children to go to.
All set? Yes.
Next resolution introduced by Counselor Zabat.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Brown, we did have Counselor Brown speaking.
That's all right. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Again, I just want to echo what my colleagues have said. This resolution obviously is to celebrate and bring awareness to the climate change and the global warming of the state that we're inspired to go out and protect our environment. A lot of folks, like was said, that on the 22nd, a lot of folks, or that Saturday around the 22nd, a lot of folks gather throughout this nation and they do a lot of local civic activities. Earth Day, most of you may not know, is probably, looked at as one of the biggest civic engagement days of the year. So it's like one of the biggest days that folks really come out and get together, they get excited, they get inspired to go out and clean up their community. But it continues to help us protect our environment. So again, thank you both for bringing this resolution in today. Thank you.
Counselor Zabat.
Just to clarify, what Counselor Robinson said, that there are no events going on, actually Green Roots is having an event on the 24th, meeting at City Hall at 9:00 a.m., socially distant.
Okay. Next resolution?
Next resolution introduced by Counselor Zabat and all members of the council. Whereas the residents of the city of Chelsea firmly believe the after-school professionals, those who work with children and youth in a wide variety of program settings, to provide extended learning opportunities during out-of-school hours, have a positive effect on our children, families, community, and businesses. And whereas after-school professionals are a decisive element in children's access to high-quality relationships and expanded opportunities beyond what they have to access at school and home, which they need to reach their full potential. And whereas after-school professionals deserve appreciation for all that they do for children to enhance their education, promote physical and emotional health, provide a safe environment, and expose them to new experiences. And whereas the city of Chelsea is committed to supporting the professionals who provide expanded learning opportunities that will help close the achievement gap and prepare young people to compete in the global economy. Now therefore be it resolved that Chelsea City Council does hereby proclaim April 19th to the 23rd, 2021, as After-School Professionals Appreciation Week in Chelsea and urges the residents of Chelsea to join in this special observance.
What is the wish of the council? Counselor Zabat?
Accept under suspension if there are no objections and speak on it briefly.
Seeing no objection, you have the floor.
Thank you. Just shout out to the educators, teachers, and paraprofessionals and people who work with the students after school. An acknowledgement that they are helping this, our children close up, we hope, close up that gap. So thank you.
Have the next order, resolution offered by Counselor Zabat regarding April 21 as, I'm sorry. Administrative Professional Day.
Now this one we do.
Yep. So during World War II, there was an increased need for skilled administrative personnel, particularly in the United States. The National Secretaries Association was formed to recognize the contributions of secretaries and other administrative personnel to the economy and to the support of their personnel development. The association's name was changed to the International Association of Administrative Professionals in 1998. The sec, the organization's vision is to inspire and to equip all administrative professionals to attain excellence. The First National Secretaries Week was organized in 1952 in conjunction with the United States Department of Commerce. And the success of every major corporation, organization, small business, and government agency, as well as cities and towns, depends on the professionalism, ethical standards, attention to detail, and diligent adherence to the expectations of excellence imbued by administrative personnel. Many work in environmental environments across the world observe this event. And administrative professionals in the city of Chelsea and worldwide play a crucial role in the day-to-day execution of tasks, programs, meetings, and singular world-changing events by providing the resources and support necessary to successfully carry out all functions in a wide array of entities. Respect is to be given to the administrative professionals who often work tirelessly behind the scenes and are worthy of accolades. Administrative Professionals Day highlights the important role of administrative professionals who are individuals from diverse backgrounds in all sectors of the modern economy in the city of Chelsea and worldwide. Whereas Administrative Professionals Day is on the Wednesday of Administrative Professionals Week, which is the last full week of April. And now therefore be it resolved that Wednesday, April 21, 2021-
April 21, 2021, the Chelsea City Council commemorates the observance of Administrative Professionals Day, introduced by Councilor Naomi Zabat. What is the wish of the board? Councilor Zabat asked that it be accepted under suspension without any objections, seeing none. Councilor Zabat, you have the floor.
Thank you. Just a very brief statement about this one is, it might seem like a hallmark holiday, and perhaps it is, but I think it's really, really important that we recognize all of the supporting staff that bring about change, because nothing would be possible without that support. And again, a shout out to our very own Fatima Malara, who does that for all of us, all of us councilors. So thank you.
Any other comments?
Next resolution?
Seeing none, I'd see if I could speak from the chair, if there's no objections. Thank you. I want to thank again Councilor Zabat for bringing this, and there were many things that were said there about how important the role the admins play behind the scenes in supporting the work that is done on a day-to-day basis. I can think of no better way of describing the work that our admin, Fatima, does for us. I know that, you know, she, again, helps in a variety of ways in making sure that we can get our agenda out, our orders in, and run these meetings in a professional way, and a lot of this would not happen without her, the great worth that she has, the long hours and such. So I want to thank Councilor Zabat for bringing this, and of course, our job well done to our admin, Fatima Malara. Thank you.
The next resolution, is that it? All set? The next resolution introduced by Councilor Zabat and Councilor Robinson. Whereas Joe Vannard has been in banking for the past 53 years and has received a banking degree from Seattle State University, whereas Joe Vannard was hired by Chelsea Provident Cooperative Bank on March 15, 1999, as its president. Whereas Chelsea Provident Cooperative Bank became Chelsea Bank and eventually merged with East Cambridge Savings Bank, with Vannard at the helm all along the way. And whereas Joe served as president of the Chelsea Chamber of Commerce from 2004 to 2005, and is currently president again until January 2022. And whereas Joe also serves at other boards such as Harbor Cove Boys and Girls of America and Chelsea Rotary. And whereas Joe has been a member of the Chelsea Rotary since May 29, 1999, and was president in 2004 to 2005, he is currently the Chelsea Rotary's treasurer. And whereas Joe Vannard has received numerous awards to recognize his contributions to the city of Chelsea and beyond, such as Rotarian of the Year in 2010, and Double Paul Harris Fellow. And whereas Joe Vannard is currently retiring as president of the Chelsea Division of East Cambridge Savings Bank. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council and its residents wish Joe Vannard a healthy and long retirement, and congratulate Joe Vannard for many years of service within our city. Enjoy your covert, Joe.
Councilor Leo Robinson?
Adopted unanimously under suspension, if there are no objections.
Seeing none.
I'll be brief, actually. Joe has been a very strong member in this community, and one of the things that, you know, he serves on a board at Harbor Cove. He also plays Santa Claus for the Chamber of Breakfast to Santa, and he's very active as a rotarian. And it's an honor for me to be in the same company of Joe. Actually, I share the Paul Harris Fellow Award with him and other members of the Rotary Club. Joe will continue to be involved in this community, even though that he's retired, he's still involved with the Chamber, and he's still involved with Rotary. And I'm sure when we get back on track to do breakfast with Santa, he will play a big role in that. I just want to wish Joe the best and thank him for his service to this community.
I'd like to echo what my colleague, Councilor Robinson, has just said. Joe Vannard is an extraordinary member of this community, and I want to thank him for all the help that he's given to me, as I've had to try to guide the Rotary Club during the year of COVID. And, you know, he's a great member of the Rotary Club and our treasurer, and he, you know, devotes countless hours to the betterment of this community. So, Joe, congratulations on your retirement, and I wish you all the luck in the world, and I know that you're going to continue to serve this community as you have for many years. Thank you.
Councilor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank Joe again for his service here in the city of Chelsea. Want to just give him the big kudos. He's done a lot of work. I've always seen him since I've been a city council at numbers of those events that was mentioned in the resolution. He's always had Chelsea at heart, although he's not from here, but he's always been a very staunch supporter of Chelsea, and I just want to wish him a well retirement. I hope he has as many long years as he did with the laboring here with these jobs that he will enjoy in retirement. I want to say thank you.
Councilor Recubro.
Having that question, you know, Mr. Joe Vannard, I wish him, he was a great person. I wish him a long and healthy retirement, and thank you for your service to the city of Chelsea.
Seeing no further comments, we'll now move on to the public speaking portion of the meeting. If there's anyone here who would like to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and your address. You will have four minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President, and all the councilors of our great city, Chelsea. My name is Susan Backstrom. I live at 260 Clark Avenue, number 807, and I'm a Chelsea Disability Commissioner. And, let's see, the thing I wanted to speak on was the resolutions about city beautification. It's about a job I can't do anymore. I loved doing it when I lived in California. I loved working on the earth and cleaning things up and making gardens beautiful and making, you know, public areas look lovely. And the city beautification team that Councilor Zabat was establishing or will try to establish tonight, I'd like to speak in favor of that. It's a really great way of involving people who live here in Chelsea, and especially young people who need lots of stuff to do. And, by the way, I love your big red boots. The Chelsea, also, it was recommended by Councilor Recubro that we really, you know, put jobs in Chelsea and get Chelsea people involved in those jobs. So I also am a member of the CET, and I've been to a couple beautification committee meetings invited by Monica Oreyana, and I just wanted to say that those meetings really inspire me to come and share support for beautification, share support for, and put forth support for building jobs, building a team, and getting that started. It really is, there are more jobs, there are Earth Day jobs, there are Green New Deal jobs, there are jobs for people, and they'll make the people who do them healthy, and the people who receive healthy environment from them will be healthy, and it'll be really a lot more beautiful. And, you know, as a hippie, that's my whole thing. So also, I'd like to say, you know, the Yom HaShoah thing, the Day of Remembrance, I've been to Yad Vad Yeshem in Jerusalem, and as a community, we will never forget. So one happy thing and one sort of more somber thing, but that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you very much.
My name is Norellis De Jesus, longtime resident here in Chelsea. I currently live at 31 Lewis Street. I'm here in full support of creating more affordable homeownership, in support of an order that Councilor Avi Yaneva has proposed for city manager, and for the council to consider more homeownership around any parcels that are listed. My story, I've lived in Chelsea all my life. I have lived in Chelsea under one particular landlord for almost, I want to say, maybe 13 years. I was moving at least eight times before I became an adult, not because of evictions or having a problematic landlord. My landlord, who I currently rent to today, is an amazing landlord, right? But because my mother, my family was growing, and my mother was looking for a bigger space for our family. Had I been, had my mom been able to become a homeowner, I would have not had to move five, six times in the city of Chelsea. We are extremely grateful and fortunate that I kept being a Chelsea girl and that we continued to live in this beautiful city, but that could have been different if she hadn't continued to find an apartment in Chelsea. Today, I have two children. We've moved twice in the city of Chelsea. I love that they go to our local Chelsea Public Schools. I love that I know their teachers. I love that they have great representatives and advocates in our community, but I fear that one day, as I continue to grow my family, I'm also not going to be able to continue to live in Chelsea. Help our family plant seeds in this community. Help them plant roots in this community. We were doing an amazing job with the help of you all, with the help of the city manager, to support those who have been hit by the pandemic by creating affordable housing vouchers or, sorry, rental vouchers or affordable housing opportunities, but we cannot forget the homeownership part, because, believe it or not, I've been working for the collaborative for 12 years. I'm also an advocate there for tenants and homeowners. And every conversation I have with families who are either being displaced or being transitioned from one place to another, I have that question, or I ask them that question, what's your ultimate goal? And it's to own something in the city of Chelsea, to be able to own their home, to have their children have that stability. And when you have someone go from a shelter to an affordable unit, and then to a homeowner program or homeownership in our city, that's success, right? I have conversations with the tenant councils and my public housing developments, right? I've organized tenant councils and public housing in Chelsea. And the conversations I'm having with them today, because luckily, they have more sustainable housing, and they weren't as impacted as much as others who, you know, who weren't able to adjust their rent, my conversations with them today is, Norellis, when am I going to be able to buy a home? I might be ready now that I have been saving up money. I didn't get hit as bad. I'm ready to own a home. As we start to see open parcels, as we start to see open properties, let's make sure our families who have been living in Chelsea are the first ones to get in there. They will have more pride for our city. We're talking about keeping our streets clean. If you bring a tenant to become a homeowner, they're going to keep the street clean. They live here, they're not absentee landlords. They take pride in the community that they live in. So please, 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 help us continue this pipeline. Today, at the Anti-Eviction Task Force meeting, one of my employees, Amber, was celebrating because she was able to rehouse two families who were once in the urgent crisis mode, as in like homeless in a shelter. She's been able to rehouse them. And the conversations that she's having with them is, hey, where are we going to see you two or three years from now? And it's always homeownership. So please, 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 support this and help us continue this pipeline. Thank you.
Alexander Floyd Vargas at 260 Clark Avenue, Chelsea. I'd like to thank the council for the resolutions as well, as I've also worked in one of my previous times as clerk, and also I am Jewish and mixed race as well. And we definitely want to be in a community that not only acts locally but thinks globally in accepting people, not just thinking, because you watch the news, or if you watched the last year and a half, it's very derisive, and that's, you know, that's not the world that I want to live in. Just because somebody's different than me, I don't want to, you know, make fun of them or insult them or anything like that. And, you know, I'm very glad of the resolutions, I'm very glad that Chelsea is thinking more holistically. Hopefully, we'll keep that up. It's very pleasant to live in a city that is cleaner, and not only just thinks about money or concrete or brick, even though we do have a lot of trucks in the city, but there's also portions, we have a lot of parks too. I remember Matt Frank telling me about that, and he also works for Housing Now. But yeah, it's, that would be, and that should be, the way that people think, act, and behave, is to remember that, you know, we are all in this together. It shouldn't just take a pandemic or a bad situation to remind us. As a matter of fact, tomorrow, I'm going down to the Community Cable and help the beautification committee as well. And I have been in Chelsea for a long time, and I like the fact that the city does seem cleaner. It does seem to have, you know, hopefully, we can keep up with having more balance and also competition when it comes to different companies to come here as well. Thank you.
Fatima, if you could provide more.
Yeah, it's all installed the way down at the bottom.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the city council? Seeing none, we'll now close that portion of the meeting. I do have three emails that were sent to us to be submitted as part of public comment. I have an email from Zahra Al Dubori, that is a lifelong resident. He feels that it is the utmost importance that Chelsea moves and prioritizes in celebrating Arab-American Heritage Month, and appreciates the resolution that was presented as part of that awareness. I have an email submitted by Stephanie Herrera, 50 Maverick Street. She's writing to inform the group the support of employing Chelsea residents for a cleaner and more beautiful city, where people live in the neighborhoods, where they enjoy looking out the windows, they feel more optimistic about life in general. She recently moved to Chelsea and noticed a few areas of Chelsea where trash and debris accumulate frequently. She is supporting the program that allows not only the beauty of Chelsea, but also improve local economy and maintain a cleaner city. Last communication is from Roseanne Bon Giovanni. She's writing to follow up her testimony on the surprise to the city council on March 8th and March 22nd, and also on the subcommittee meeting on March 1, 2021, regarding the density increase of R1 and R2 districts. She states that she offers data that we must launch a community-wide process infused with data to ensure we are planting our neighborhoods in a healthier and more than just than our forefathers before us. States that Chelsea is only 1.8 miles, that over the last that over the last 10 years, there has been a number of hundreds of new residential units though have not kept same pace for open space. She believes that the reducing of lot sizes or removing or reducing open space requirements will only exasperate Chelsea's already comprised public health. And we all know that Chelsea was impacted negatively with COVID-19 in part because of the long history of environmental injustice and legacy pollution. While we heard that some have said Chelsea that we have a housing crisis, we must increase supply to reduce demand. She answers that she questions whether, for who will that be built? That the, while we have increased demand, are the new medium, the median income for single persons in Chelsea is $26,983 and for a family of four, $56,000. But that one and two-bedroom condos are selling between $415 and $575. Lastly, she asked the community leaders to pointed out that decisions in the past, we must not revert. She offers that redlining historic zoning practices that have implemented racist and classist policies have led us to a place where we are today, neighborhoods with disproportionate share of toxic pollution, industrial activity, disinvested slum lords and substandard living conditions. In closing, she calls on the elected and appointed leaders to pause in haste and while the city is approving zoning changes, engage in a truly inclusive community process to create zoning that welcomes a just recovery and that looks at the city holistically, not in piecemeal fashion. These copies of these emails will be provided to all the councilors. Moving on, we now have a approval of the minutes of the April 5th meeting. Do I have a motion? Councilor Brown asked that we accept and file the minutes of the April 5th meeting under suspension. If there's any objections, seeing none. We have a communication received from City Manager Tom Embrizino regarding the Chelsea Eats and Chelsea Grant, Grant for Chelsea Eats Card Program.
Grant for Chelsea Eats Food Debit Card Program. Dear Councilors, the Shaw Family Foundation has agreed to provide the city with an additional $500,000 grant to the Chelsea Eats Debit Card Program. This grant will allow for the city to fully fund a sixth distribution for the program on or about May 1, 2021. A copy of the word letter is attached. And according to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 4453A, I am requesting that the City Council formally approve the acceptance of this grant. A copy of the required order is attached.
Councilor Robinson?
Mentioned there'll be some coming up on the new business.
We have a communication received from the City Manager regards to the request for approval of union contracts with SEIU Local 888.
Your council is pursuant to Section 431 of the Chelsea City Charter and writing to request the City Council approval for the cost items of the new collective bargaining agreements negotiated with SEIU Local 888. There are two contracts here. The first is a one-year contract for FY '21. The second is a three-year contract for the period July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024. Copies of the memorandum of agreement are attached. You may recall last year, just prior to the COVID, the city and SEIU had agreed on the new three-year contract. Unfortunately, by the time that agreement came before the council for approval, we were at the height of the pandemic and its economic impacts precluded the city from agreeing to any long-term contractual commitments. The City Council did approve the retroactive payment for FY '20 and the negotiated substantive changes to the SEIU contract took effect. But the City Council sent the parties back to the negotiating table to reconsider the financial terms for future years beyond FY '20. The city and SEIU have now completed those financial negotiations. The agreed-upon cost items are as follows. For the one-year contract for this covenant fiscal year, July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021, SEIU members will receive no percentage increase. Instead, they will receive a one-time bonus payment of $1,100 per employee. The total cost is $46,200. For the three-year contract for fiscal years 2022 to 2024, SEIU employees will receive an annual percentage raise of 3% per year. The total cost of wage increases over the three years of the contract is approximately $432,000. I respectfully ask the City Council to approve the cost items of these two contracts and approve the required appropriation from free cash of $46,200 to accommodate the one-time bonus payments for FY '21. Copies of the proposed orders are attached.
Councilor Robinson? So moved. Moving on to the next communication. We have a communication for the City Manager in regard to the approval of union contracts for police superior officers. Dear Councilors, pursuant to Section 4-3L of the City Charter, I'm writing to request City Council approval for the cost items of the new collective bargaining agreements negotiated with police superior officers, New England Police Benevolent Association, Inc., Local 98. There are two contracts. The first is a one-year contract for July 1 to June 30, 2021. The second is a three-year contract for July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024. Copies of the memorandum of agreement are attached. Memorandum outlining the changes, though, to the contract terms. The most significant for the city perspective is the change outlined in paragraph seven of the three-year contract which allows the city to require body-worn cameras. This was a key demand of the city. The new body-worn camera policy is attached in the memorandum of agreement for a three-year contract. The first one-year contract has no material cost component. It has no pay increase. It does increase the detail rate to $60 and it adds to the holiday pay provision of the new state holiday of Juneteenth, which we will observe in City Hall this year with a day off on Friday, June 18, 2021. The current Police Department FY '21 salary should have sufficient funds to absorb the cost of this additional holiday. So there is no need for any appropriation request at this time. The three-year contract for FY '22-24 contains the financial benefits mainly in the form of annual raises. The amounts follow: FY '22, 2.75; FY '23, 2.75; FY '24, 3.00% on July 1, '23, and 5% on January 1, 2024. The package contains amounts to 9% raise over four years covered by these agreements. The total additional cost of wages increases over four years is approximately $691,000. I respectfully ask the City Council to approve the cost of these items. Two contract copies of the proposed orders are attached. Councilor Robinson? All moved. We now have the next communication. Oh, nope, sorry. We had done that earlier. Moving on to communication received from Dan O'Beardsley regarding funds for the seasonal beautification workforce. A letter stated that in, what is the wish of the council? Anyone? Councilor Brown?
Can I make a motion to accept all the communications? Because they're all, if it's okay, they're all in favor of the support of the fund for the beautification. It seems though they're all pretty much the same letters. And it is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. If it's okay with all the councilors, they're all the same letters, same support for...
I will, there's a motion to accept all the communications in regards to the seasonal beautification workforce. I will call out the names of those who wrote so that the public is aware of who wrote in favor and to acknowledge the communications from those individuals.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If you just want, we always ask for name and address. So if you just want to include the name and the address, which is on a memo.
Yep, will do. We have Daniel R. Barsley, proud resident of Chelsea for 28 years, 14 Lisa Lane, Chelsea, Mass. We have Nick Dubrow, 60 Dudley Street. We have Stephanie Batton, 60 Dudley Street. We have Darlene DeVita, 60 Dudley Street. Cassandra Dwayne, 60 Dudley Street. Monica Elias, 44 Prospect Ave. Judith Dwyer, 11 Hurt Street. We have no committee, no committee report, so we're moving on to second readings.
Second readings. First item under second readings is the appointments to boards and commissions.
What is the wish of the board?
Make a motion that we adopt these appointments under roll call vote. I just asked the clerk if he could just read the names out and the positions.
So we have a, the board members to be appointed are, Ms. Vanessa Mendoza Mercado to the Community School Advisory Board. To the Council of Elder Affairs, Mr. Anthony Bon Giovanni, 44 Galilee Road. For reappointment to the Cultural Council, Juliana Burgeani Gerger, 61 Bolton's Way. For reappointment to the Cultural Council, Ms. Catherine Cabral, 56 Cottage Street, Chelsea. For reappointment to the Chelsea Housing Authority, Mr. Tony Hernandez, 3 County Road. For reappointment to the Licensing Commission, Ms. Gladys Vega, 116 Clark Ave. For reappointment to the Community Preservation Committee, Mr. Jonathan Gomez Pereira, 68 Carroll Street. Clerk Carl Row.
Counselor Vito absent. Counselor Abadina?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Absent.
Counselor Vega Maldonado?
Is it a conflict of interest for me to vote since my mother is one?
I would say that you would abstain, so she would abstain.
Okay.
Gladys Vega is on the board. So she will abstain.
Abstain. Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Zabat?
Yes.
1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6.
Counselor Robinson?
Seven in favor. I thought I called you counsel. Counselor Roberts, I skipped you, yeah.
Said yes.
Eight votes in favor, none opposed, two absent and one abstention.
We have an order introduced by Counselor Aviyaneda and Counselor Garcia regarding the outdoor dining ordinance. What is the wish of the council?
The adoption?
Counselor Robinson asks that we have a roll call vote on the adoption of the ordinance. Clerk Carl Row?
Okay.
Just to remind my colleagues and those in the public, this is to allow the furniture to be stored outside on public way, providing that it is secured and trained during this next, hopefully, busy outdoor dining season.
Counselor Vito absent. Counsel Abadina?
Yes.
Counsel Recupero?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia? Absent. Counselor Vega Maldonado?
Counsel Vega Maldonado? Waiting for the light to change. Nope.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Zabat?
Yes.
1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. Eight in favor and none opposed, three absent.
We have an order introduced by Counsel Robinson asking for the reappropriation of $2,111, sorry, $211,750 in free cash to the Bunker Hill Community College Scholarship Program. What is the wish of the council?
I ask for a roll call vote on the adoption.
Counsel Robinson asks for a roll call on the adoption of the Bunker Hill Scholarship Program. A yes vote would adopt it and a no vote would negate it.
Counsel Vito absent. Counsel Abadina?
Yes.
Counsel Recupero?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia absent. Counsel Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Zabat?
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed, two absent.
We have a communicate, I'm sorry, an order that the City Council authorized the expenditure of the amount of $65,000 from free cash to the Elder Affairs Contract Services expense account for senior transportation. Counsel Robinson?
I'm asked for a roll call vote on the adoption. There are no objections.
Seeing none.
Counsel Vito absent. Counsel Abadina?
Yes.
Counsel Recupero?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia absent. Counsel Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez? Counsel Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Zabat?
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed, two absent.
We have an order introduced by Counsel Robinson regarding the appropriation of $50,000 of free cash to personal department education assistance line account 0111-5251-519200. Counsel Robinson?
I'm asked for a roll call vote on the adoption. There are no objections.
Ask for a roll call. Clerk Carl Row?
Counsel Vito absent. Counsel Abadina?
Yes.
Counsel Recupero?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia absent. Counsel Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
And Counsel Zabat?
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed, two absent. Motion adopted.
Order introduced by Counsel Robinson for the appropriation of $50,000 to the personal free, sorry, am I missing one?
$75,000.
$75,000 for Plantwide Planning Department Downtown Initiative Contract Services. This is to provide money for outdoor dining.
Option if there are no objections.
This is for $75,000 for the downtown.
I thought it was, okay. Yep, Downtown Initiative, all right.
Yep.
Counsel Vito absent. Counsel Abadina?
Yes.
Counsel Recupero?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia absent. Counsel Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Zabat?
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed, two absent.
We have an order introduced by Counsel Robinson regarding the appropriation of $255,850 free cash for DBW Streets and Sidewalks Temporary Salaries Account. What is the wish of the council?
I'd ask for a roll call vote on the adoption if there are no objections.
We have a roll call vote on the Chelsea City Council to authorize $255,000.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is this for the fund for the seasonal beautification workforce?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So the funds are requested from the first was $292,850. Here it's $255,585. Is that correct?
Point of inquiry through the chair, counselor. We will ask the city manager for the discrepancy between the amount asked for in the communication versus what is in front of us at this time.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. It's the two next orders total, the 292. It's broken down into salaries and a small amount for materials. So there's one request for an appropriation to a salary line item and the other is a request So there's one request for an appropriation to a salary line item and the other is a request to a materials line item.
So in order to reach the two ninety-two, both the, the, the two next orders have to be approved?
Correct.
Yes. There's a motion asked by Counsel Taylor to put both orders together as a one vote. Is there any objections to seeing? We're being asked to vote the thirty-seven thousand dollars together along with the two fifty-five. Is anyone who would like to speak on this?
Is that the one for the cleaning?
Yes, it is.
They're going to vote together? That's what we're going to vote on now?
That's, that's correct, sir.
Why they separate them?
Not sure. Counsel, the question through the chair, Mr. City Manager, is why were they separated?
The program included both labor and materials and the appropriation has to go into different line items.
Okay. Counsel Brown?
I'm actually going to be voting no on this. I know it's, it's a program that a lot of folks want to see happen. I just think right now where we are as a city, where we coming out of and the money that we have, we just don't have this money. This is close to three hundred thousand dollars and just coming out of the pandemic, continuing trying to keep our residents in their homes, keep them fed. We have got a lot of grants, but again, this year funding is something that we already have availability. We have resources with our different programs that we have to work to keep our streets cleaner. I think we need to do a much better job in outreach and try to get the property owners and also the resident owners to do their share. Also, it also sends a bad message to a lot of other folks that's doing, you know, non-funded positions. If that we're paying folks to creating jobs with money, then we should be considering money for folks for licensing boards and planning boards. And I just think we're opening up a backhand of worms here. It's been a lot of great things. I know neighborhood developers for years have done, you know, clean up beautification projects. I know Green Roots for years have done beautification projects. We have a lot of active folks in our community to do some of this work. We have a lot of youth that work with our city high school program that we can put the work in, in, in incorporating this year just to create twenty-seven or twenty-five jobs. It's just not the right time. I've talked to, you know, folks and it's just not something that I can vote in favor of at this moment. Thank you.
Counsel Zabit?
Um, so I am very passionate about this particular request and I will be voting yes. In terms of the pandemic and the situation that Chelsea is in, we are being, we are getting federal funding to fill that gap. We are in a, according to our city manager, who I trust is telling us honestly where we are and where he envisions we will be financially. We are in a good place and the creation of even one more job in this community is a benefit to the community. You're providing somebody with a job, whether it's, whether it's a youth or an adult with a family. And so if we have twenty-seven new jobs, ideally, that money is going back into our community. We are cleaning up the streets, which has become, I think, possibly because of the pandemic, has become increasingly more hard, harder for DPW to be able to clean up. As we've discussed at these subcommittees that we've had, there is, it is increasingly challenging for the streets to be kept clean and there are neighborhoods that are spotless and there are neighborhoods that are overrun with garbage. There are parks that the kids are playing in and DPW cannot keep up with it. We do have a contract with ROKA. We do have other, we have youth that are employed as well. This is a way of helping out. This is an auxiliary way of adding to the workforce that we have, which clearly is just not enough. It's not a huge ask financially and it is a benefit to the community in so many ways. Sanitation, hygiene, the, the mental health of the community, cleaning up the, the streets as well as the beautification is, as far as I can see, is a win-win and is a small ask financially. So I encourage my fellow counselors to please vote yes on this. Thank you.
Any other call, any counselors? Is there any objection from me speaking from the chair? I'm sorry, Counsel Robinson?
Can I get a clarification on what, I, I thought the orders that we were looking at were the two hundred fifty-five thousand, eight fifty to thirty-seven?
That is correct. Two hundred fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty in free cash to FY twenty-one DBW Streets and Sidewalks Temporary Salaries Account, which will be used for temporary workers to be hired. That will include the one supervisor and twenty-five nineteen-hour individuals. And then in addition to that would be thirty-seven thousand dollars to the FY DBW Streets and Sidewalks Maintenance City Account, which would help pay for all of the supplies for that program, which is basically the beautification program that was described. The total cost, two fifty-five, eight fifty plus thirty-seven equals the two hundred ninety-two thousand, three hundred and fifty that the city manager had written in his proposal. We're voting on them both combined.
So that was separated because it was one and, one and one, right?
That was separated because the, you cannot, the, the account for thirty-seven thousand dollars is for materials and the two hundred fifty-five thousand dollars is for actual labor cost payroll.
But it's actually one.
But we're voting for one together.
Okay.
So again, any objections for me speaking on this from the chair? Seeing none, thank you. You know, it wasn't easy for me to come to. It's a very difficult subject matter to vote on. I, I, I respect my colleagues' will and desire and frustration as the trash. You know, I've been up here for twenty years and it's definitely an issue that has been longstanding. I've done everything I can. I think my counselor and colleague, Counsel Brown, can remember when we both represented District Seven, that that was the crux of the, a lot of the frustration that downtown, in particular Bellingham Square, was always one of the most visible, dirtiest places. And I think he was on board with me when we voted together to push, if you recall, for the Mad Vac. And I'm not sure if some of you may have remembered the Mad Vac, where we asked the city manager, then Jay asked to go out and buy these little vehicles that would actually go around and ride with the vacuum. And we had a gentleman that would go around and ride up and down the streets of Chelsea and try to pick up trash. Maybe some of you can remember. There used to be grates and protections around the trees in downtown Broadway. And the reason why they were taken down was because people used to throw trash into those grates and it would be surrounding the trees and it just looked ugly. So we finally decided, okay, let's just get rid of this nice decorative protection of trees because they accumulated trash. There were times when I asked for more barrels downtown and I would get into an argument with Jay Ash and Joe Fody about that idea because he said, well, if you put more trash barrels down, that means there would just be more work for our DBW workers. I mean, these are the type of fights that we had. And so I understand the frustration that my colleague has in saying like, maybe we should go out this way. But it just seems that this approach that was brought up forward, to me, just led to more questions. It was like, you know, you're pulling strings on a ball. And the problem that I have with this is that I'm not really satisfied that the fact that we're still, if we do spend this money, we still have money that's going out to a program like ROKA. I don't feel comfortable knowing that we're spending, you know, a, a business partner in ROKA at the same time. And maybe we just need to examine in totality what our, you know, what the plan is and maybe not have that line item with them. If they're not doing the job that is needed for our community, then maybe it's time to investigate whether or not they should be paid and we should do something else. Maybe it is this program, but one or the other. I'm not satisfied with the answer about, you know, the number of youths being hired. Only four youths work in, in cleaning? You know, again, I originally was open to this idea because it was said to that maybe we would be hiring more kids, more Chelsea kids, but that's not going to happen here. And I can tell you that from someone who's been an ardent supporter of the Summer Jobs Youth Program that has received, it seems, less and less money over the years, that our kids are the hardest to hire. Nobody wants to hire our kids because they're temporary. If anyone needs a job in this community, it's our kids. And if we are not going to invest in our children, then who is? Because we know the, the, the business sector is not going to hire them. It is only X amount. Also, as I heard the, the idea of this program and hiring temporary workers, I know that there are about at least six temporary agencies that operate in the city of Chelsea. And I would think that rather than a DBW commissioner and a supervisor who's very busy, would want to take on trying to think of every year going out to do and find the individuals and him and his supervisor choose to find these individuals on an annual basis, when quite frankly, I think the answer should have been, okay, let's do an RFP on an annual basis and have the six agencies that are currently operating in Chelsea plus be the ones who are going to go out and supply the temporary workers, just like they supply the workers, whether they be for packing around the city or to other entities, because we see the vans every day here in Chelsea. The vans are hiring local folks. There are temporary agencies. Why is there not, say, an RFP that goes out, a request for proposal and figure out that that agency will be handling this so that we don't have to worry about unemployment, health benefits, or all of those things that my colleague Counsel Recupero brought up? You know, the city manager says, well, you know, we'll take a chance. Well, you don't have to take a chance if you do an RFP with a temporary agency. Doesn't happen. So I think we really need to think this more thorough and especially, and again, the biggest reason why I'm not on board with this is because I think we need to be investing more on our youth versus the adults who I know can get a job with these temporary agencies that I'm talking about. So that's where I stand. And with that, I'll ask the city clerk, well, he's not here, but I will ask this, I will call the roll for the vote on the beautification. Counselor Damali Vido? Oh, sorry.
It'll take eight votes for this to be adopted.
It'll take eight votes to pass. Counselor Damali Vido, absent. Counselor Roya Avellaneda, no. Counselor Giovanni Recupero? Counselor Judith Garcia, absent. Counselor Melinda Vega Maldonado? Counselor, Melinda Vega Maldonado? Absent.
No.
Oh, sorry. Was that a yes or no?
No.
No. Counsel Leo Robinson?
Unfortunately, I have to vote no on this matter.
Counsel Ymir Rodriguez?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Todd Taylor?
No.
Counselor Ennio Lopez? Counsel Calvin Brown?
No.
Counsel Naomi Zabit?
Yes.
Two in favor, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven against and two, I'm sorry, two absent. The motion fails. Moving on to the next item on the agenda.
The two hundred thousand dollars in free cash Department Contract Services Account. The structural assessment hazardous materials investigation asbestos abatement work and headroom stabilization measures at the Forbes site.
Counsel Robinson?
I'd ask for a roll call vote on the adoption if there are no objections.
We have a roll call vote on the two hundred thousand dollars for the demolition at the Forbes site. Counselor Ennio Lopez?
I have a question, yes.
Yes.
Regarding those two hundred thousand, is the city going to get reimbursed that money?
The city will have, will be reimbursed through a lead at some point. The future, the present owner will have to pay that at closing. Thank you. Counselor Brown, did you have a question?
I'm outside, thanks.
Clerk call roll.
Counsel Vito, absent. Counsel Abadina?
Yes.
Counsel Recupero? Counselor Garcia? Counselor Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Zabit?
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed, two absent.
We have the next order introduced by Counsel Robinson in regards to the free cash to FY DBW two million forty-three thousand five hundred in the FY twenty-one DBW Streets and Sidewalks Capital Account. This isn't to pay for the railroad improvements for the quiet zone. Counsel Robinson asks for a roll call vote.
Roll call vote on the adoption if there are no objections.
Seeing none, no objections, we move to roll.
Counselor Vito, absent. Counsel Abadina?
Yes.
Counsel Recupero? Counselor Garcia? Absent. Counsel Vega Maldonado?
Counsel Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Zabit?
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed, two absent. Motion adopted.
We have an order introduced by Counsel Robinson in regards to the appropriation of two hundred thousand dollars in free cash for FY DBW Streets and Sidewalks for the lights installation capital account.
I'd ask for a roll call vote on the adoption if there are no objections.
Counsel Vito, absent. Counsel Abadina?
Yes.
Counsel Recupero? Counsel Garcia? Absent. Counsel Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Zabit?
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed, two absent.
We have an order introduced by Counsel Robinson in regards to five hundred thirty-six thousand dollars, nine hundred and seventy dollars in free cash for the MIS Capital Computer Equipment Account.
I'd ask for a roll call vote on the adoption if there are no objections.
Seeing none.
Counsel Vito, absent. Counsel Abadina?
Yes.
Counsel Recupero? Counselor Garcia? Absent. Counsel Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Zabit?
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed, two absent. Next one is the two hundred thousand and water retained earnings to Water Enterprise Fund over other capital line for repairs to Alamo Hill Water Pump.
Counsel Robinson?
I'd ask for a roll call vote on the adoption if there are no objections.
Counsel Vito, absent. Counsel Abadina?
Yes.
Counsel Recupero? Counselor Garcia? Absent. Counsel Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Zabit?
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed, two absent.
We have a order requested by Counsel Robinson that will include the building repairs by, suggested by the city manager in a total of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in addition to Streets and Sidewalks overtime for sixty thousand dollars for a combined, combination of one hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Those will be orders F forty-four, F forty-five, F forty-six. One vote will take care of all three. On a roll call vote, Counsel Robinson?
Yes, I'd ask for a roll call vote on the adoption if there are no objections to the three orders.
Seeing none. Seeing none.
Council Vido, absent. Council Avellaneda.
Yes.
Council Recupero. Council Garcia, absent. Council Vega Maldonado.
Yes.
Council Robinson.
Yes.
Council Rodriguez.
Yes.
Council Taylor.
Yes.
Council Lopez.
Yes.
Council Brown.
Yes.
Council Zabit.
Yes.
Nine in favor and not opposed, two absent. Motion adopted.
Moving on to new business. We have an order introduced by Council Robinson regarding holding a subcommittee in a conference with the city manager and the city solicitor to discuss the need, the increase of waiver residencies. Council Robinson.
I'd adopt this shenanigans under suspension. If I can just be brief.
Do you have the floor, counselor?
We seem to be creating a workforce that has been able to move out of the city. We have a number of residents seeking employment. And in speaking to some people, I said, well, a lot of people are for upward mobility, which I'm not against, but I also would like to see that upward mobility be related more to Chelsea residents. And I think our understanding of those jobs from DPW and other city jobs, the reason they got the jobs was because they lived in Chelsea. So I think we need to have a conversation about what alternative do we have in regards to the waiver. Thank you.
Council Recupero.
From what I understand is that even if we object, we don't want these people to move, we can't do nothing about it. It all has to do with the unions. So it's up to the city manager on the next contracts. I would like to hear from the city manager if that's how it works, but it's up to the city manager to work some kind of deal with the unions where these people will stay here. Is that the way it works? Because I want to know, is that how it works? Do we have to negotiate with each individual union for them to stay here? Or can we, the council, say, no, we don't want you to leave? And they have to stay? Or even if we say, you gotta stay, they can still leave?
We'll have that, that'll be answered in the, in the, in the subcommittee. Well, it's not a time for that to be answered right now, but that'll be something you can ask during the subcommittee conference. Council Lopez.
Yes, I also agree with Council Robinson. I'm against all these waivers. A while ago, there was a person who moved to New Hampshire. And I, I think that we have people here in Chelsea that are looking for jobs. And giving these waivers to all these people that are moving away from the city, I'm really against that. So hopefully, we can have some final decision and what can we do about it? And I know there's a lot of people in Chelsea who wants to work. Thank you.
Next order is an order introduced by Council Todd Taylor that a subcommittee on conference be held to discuss fireworks complaints as we've been coming during the summer holiday period. Council Taylor.
As...
Under suspension?
Yeah.
Motion?
Motion to accept it under suspension. If I could speak on it, please.
You have the floor.
So we've already done this, but Counselor Vido was the one who asked for the thing last time, but we need to bring it up and have a sub-conference on fireworks before the Fourth of July is coming soon. So I'd like to have a sub-conference on this as soon as possible.
Council Lopez.
I thank Counselor Todd Taylor for bringing this up. I also will be in favor of this, and I hope we can have a subcommittee conference to discuss this. Last year, it was, it was crazy. I think if people have money to buy all these fireworks, they can pay a fine. It was a disgrace last year, actually, seeing all these fireworks. It was unbelievable. People who had dogs, people who are elderly people of their homes, they suffer, and we all suffered this, two, three in the morning, these fireworks. I'm happy that Counselor Taylor brought this up, and I'm gonna support this. Thank you.
Motion adopted under suspension. This is the order introduced by Council Taylor.
Okay.
We're on the third one now.
All right.
Order introduced by Council Avellaneda. Order that the city manager, in an effort to create affordable homeownership opportunities, present to the city council a plan of action within 30 days to either take bieminent domain or friendly take in the following parcels.
Chair recognizes Council Avellaneda.
Move to adopt under suspension. And if I may speak on this?
You can speak on the matter, counselor.
We've been talking and we've been trying to work as a community and as a council, individuals up here about how can we create more homeownership opportunities, affordable homeownership opportunities for our residents, our employees and such? And many times, we talk about, you know, previous ways that we have operated is that we may create inclusionary zoning. We propose maybe denser housing allowances for residential in certain areas so that maybe that those numbers may reach a point where it pays for or economically feasible for affordable opportunities to exist. We adopted, or we proposed the CPA in front of our voters, and they approved it. We created the Affordable Housing Trust Act, Trust Fund, and that's now operating. I think we've done everything possible that is allowed by the city council. But I would argue that part of me says that I don't think we continue to do enough. And that one of the ways that we could possibly do this is by, just like this city did many years ago, and used eminent domain and friendly taking to create One North and the Hotel area and the Chelsea Clark Apartments to create economic development. Maybe we should be using the same sort of tools to look at other areas of the city where I see parcels of land that are currently vacant, not being used, that are next to other residential properties. In other words, I don't want to just sit here and just be reactive to what's going on in the private developer. And I don't want to live my advocacy just to being in front of zoning boards and say, this is what should happen, and let the private market do what it does. So I just simply ask the city manager, just like we did when this board voted to take the Salvation Army to create affordable housing opportunity, I'm looking for him to review this area with his staff, maybe come up with a game plan and say, present it to the city council and say, look, we think we can work with the owners in this area to create affordable homeownership opportunities. Maybe we can't. Maybe we won't. I don't, I don't know. But what I don't want to do is just not sit up here and be reactive. I want to know that I did everything I could as a counselor so that when someone like Norielis, you know, comes up and says, I'm looking to buy a home, when we're sitting up here complaining about our workers who are leaving the city, we can say, look, we voted to do this, we acted to do that, we are looking at land, and we're not just gonna wait for the private developers to do what they do. We're going to be aggressive and proactive and ask the city manager and his staff to say, let's set this land aside and create homeownership opportunities for our residents, for Chelsea folks to continue to live here. So again, it's just, it's a request to the city manager. I have a lot of confidence that him and Alex and Carl Allen can come up with something and then come back to us. And, you know, again, I don't take the step of eminent domain lightly at all. And, but I've gone through this before. And if we are going to make sure there are benefits to our residents in the city of Chelsea, maybe it takes bold, drastic actions such as this to create the opportunities for our residents. And I look forward to hearing a response from the city manager and his staff. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the matter?
Adopted under suspension. Next order introduced by Council Robinson. Order that city council hereby accepts and approves the Shaw Family Foundation grant any amount of 50, $500,000 for the public purpose of funding the Chelsea Eats debit card program.
Council Robinson.
I'd ask for a roll call vote on the adoption.
Council Robinson asked for a roll, roll call vote on the acceptance of the grant of $500,000 from the Shaw Foundation to continue funding the Chelsea Eats debit card program.
Council Vido, absent. Council Avellaneda.
Yes.
Council Recupero. Council Garcia, absent. Council Vega Maldonado.
Yes.
Council Robinson.
Yes.
Council Rodriguez. Council Taylor.
Yes.
Council Lopez.
Yes.
Council Brown.
Yes.
Council Zabit.
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Eight in favor and not opposed, three absent. Motion adopted.
Next order.
Next order is pursuant to Section 431 of the Chelsea City Charter. The Chelsea City Council approved the cost items set forth in a collective bargaining agreement negotiated with SEIU Local 888, memorialized in a memorandum of agreement for the period July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021, fiscal year 2021, dated April 1, 2021.
What is the wish to council?
I'd ask to move this to a committee on conference. If there is no objections.
This is going to be moved to a committee on conference under suspension. Seeing any, no objections, so moved.
Next item introduced by Council Robinson. Order that pursuant to Section 4 dash 31 of the Chelsea City Charter, the Chelsea City Council approved the cost items set forth in a collective bargaining agreement negotiated with SEIU Local 888, memorialized in a memorandum of agreement for the period July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024, dated April 1, 2021.
What is the wish to council?
I'd ask also to move this to conference. If there's no objections.
Council Robinson asked that this be moved under suspension to a conference. Seeing no objection.
Order that introduced by Council Robinson. Order that to fund the collective bargaining agreement negotiated with the SEIU Local 888 for fiscal year 2021. The Chelsea City Council authorized appropriation for free cash of $46,200 to the FY2021 regular salaries account to fund the FY2021 contract bonus payments. Such payments to be allocated by department in the following.
Council Robinson.
I'd ask for a roll call vote on the adoption. There is a breakdown of the, all the different departments as to the amount of dollars that, excuse me, that they would be receiving. I'd ask for a roll call vote on the adoption.
Council Robinson, this is, would be two readings. Council Robinson.
Yep, I'll move it to a second.
Okay.
Second reading.
Move it to a second reading under suspension.
Order that pursuant to Section 431 of the Chelsea City Charter, the Chelsea City Council approved the cost items set forth in a collective bargaining agreement negotiated with New England Police Benevolent Association, Inc., Local 98, police superior officers, memorialized in a memorandum of agreement for the period of July 1, 2021 to June 30, 19... I'm sorry, June 30, 2021, dated April 5, 2021. Council Robinson, what is the wish of the board?
Move to a second reading under suspension. If there are no objections.
Is this going also to a subcommittee conference?
It'll be part of the subcommittee on conference.
Okay, part of the conference. The whole package is. Pursuant to Section 431, again, the Chelsea City Charter, the Chelsea City Council approved the cost items set forth in a collective bargaining agreement negotiated with the New England Police Benevolent Association, Local 98, memorialized in a memorandum of agreement from July 1, 2021 to June 30, 24, April 5, and 2021. Council Robinson.
Move to a second reading, and they will, this will also be part of the conference that we'll be holding.
We have an order introduced by Counselor Ro, I'm sorry, Counselor Avellaneda and Counselor Recupero regarding the changing in the R1 district. Whereas in express purpose of municipal zoning to promote the health, safety, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the city of Chelsea, and whereas the city council, after due notice, public hearing, deliberation finds that Chapter 34 advances amendments are legitimate aspect of public interest, that it further promotes health, safety, and general welfare of inhabitants of the city of Chelsea, that it encourages most appropriate use of land throughout the city of Chelsea, therefore be ordained that the revised Code of Ordinances of the city of Chelsea be amended. Ordinance revised Part 2, Chapter 34 of Chelsea Code Ordinances as follows. Amendment 1, that Chapter 34, Article 11, Table of Dimension Regulations, Section 34 dash 262 be amended by changing the R1 district, the per dwelling unit and total density as follows. One to two units per dwelling, 3,100 square feet, but not less than 6,000 square feet total. That Section 34 dash 300 Table of Use Regulations be amended to change three family dwelling to N to SP. Counselor Giovanni Recupero.
Motion to send the planning board for a recommendation and set a public hearing and a conference for a subcommittee and conference.
Motion to send to Planning Board under suspension along with setting a conference, a committee on conference, and a public hearing once the Planning Board sends its recommendation. Next order introduced by Counsel Avellaneda. Orderance revising Part 2 of 34 Code Ordinances as follows. That 34th Article 11 Table Dimensions, Section 34 dash 262 be amended for the R2 district as follows. The former one to three units table shall be renamed to the one to six units. The former apartment table should be renamed to seven-plus unit tables. Amendment 2, one to six units, 3,500 square feet for unit one, 1,000 for each additional unit, but not a lot less than 5,000 square feet. Seven units plus, 3,500 square feet for the first unit, 950 square feet for each additional unit, but not less than 10,000 square feet. Amendment 3, changing the dimensional tables on the, on Section 34 dash 262 be amended for the district of minimal open space from 100, one to six units, 100 square feet as limited by footnote number nine. Seven-plus units, 100 square feet as limited by footnote number nine. What is wish to council?
I'd like to refer this to the planning board, like to set up a public hearing and also set up a conference under suspension. If there are no objections.
Seeing none. At this time, that I want to make sure that I recognize that we have our schoolperson on call here, Ms. Rosemary Carlisle. Appreciate her attendance here tonight. Also, at this time, I'll ask if any of my colleagues have any announcements. Public announcements. Okay. Counsel Brown, an announcement.
Just want to announce that FEMA has a funeral service set up. Now, you can actually go to FEMA.gov. They, you can, excuse me. If you had anyone that had lost their life through the pandemic, through the COVID-19, you can get up to $9,000 for a burial service. If you had multi-family members, the multi-folks that you financially provide it to, you can receive up to $35,000. This program actually starts today. There's really no application process. Everything is filled out online. So it's very helpful. I know we've tried here to help folks in need of burying their loved ones once they go, pass on, if they have passed on from COVID-19. But now, starting today, FEMA have set up their website where they will be able to help individuals up to $9,000 per death. So if you have multi-deaths, you can actually get up to $35,000. So that's a really big support, financial support. It's a big burden lifted from those folks that actually have lost loved ones through the COVID-19, that don't have the means of paying for it. You can actually go back and look at it. You can actually go back and look at it. So please check that out. It's on FEMA.com. Thank you. Dot gov, I'm sorry.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes, I just want to announce that the city is giving some vaccinations at a senior center. I was there yesterday, and it was amazing to see so many people coming in for vaccines. And please, you know, if you're a resident of Chelsea, there's free vaccines there. And I encourage people who hasn't got it, come over Friday, Saturday, and Sundays. I was there yesterday almost all day, and there were so many people, all the way, the line was all the way to St. Rose Church. And just come and get it, it's free. Thank you.
Counsel Recupero?
My public announcement is, I spoke to the D P W director, and there seems to be an issue on, was that Park Street, Park and Pearl and Congress, on Congress, that piece of Congress that takes you down, they shut it off. So that cripples the whole, that whole side is crippled because everything goes through there. You have to go all the way around. So I spoke to the D P W director, and he told me that that's the gas company doing it. So he told me that he's going to speak to them to do the work at night, not during the day when everybody has to use it. Because that's, if you shut that part of the street, it's a small street, it's only from Park Street to Congress Ave. You know, the little piece? But that little piece is a very important piece. If you shut that like they're doing it, you'll kill the whole block, everything there, everybody from Congress, from Essex, from Maverick, and everybody that comes off the bridge goes there. So he assured me that he's going to speak to them, and he's going to try to make the work at night. So for right now, if it's still there, try to avoid that area, because if you don't, you're going to have to go all the way around just to get to where you want to go, because you can't go down that street, it's blocked off. So I hope that he's going to fix it, and he said he is. So I believe he is going to fix it. Thank you. Oh, wait a minute, it's something else, too. I'm sorry, can I say something else, too? You have a food pantry on Friday at the church, Light of Christ, and on Saturday on St. Luke's. So if people are looking, that they need food, they can go to these two areas. It's on, let me repeat it again, it's on Friday at Church of Light of Christ, and on Saturday at St. Luke's.
I just want to say, this week was our clerk's birthday. I know we did a little private event, some of you may, but I wanted to make sure that everyone knew that we were wishing Paul Casino a happy birthday. And a little fun fact, this now makes almost fifty years that this gentleman has served either in public service, twenty, what was it, four years as a, four years as a school committee person, twenty years as a alderman, and was at one time temporary mayor, even though he wasn't in the city at the time, and also in now, a clerk for, our city clerk for more than twenty-four years now. So fifty years of service to this council and the city as a whole, and a very happy birthday publicly, even though we already had some cake, so, again. Any other announcements? Seeing none? Any, any moments of silence for anyone? Counsel Brown?
Thank you. I just want to wish the Robinson family, Aunt Spruski, their great aunt, sister of Ms. Louise Robinson, Mamie Bridges, passed away last week. She was ninety-five years old, long, longtime Chelsea resident, right down the corner of Spruski and Hurd, right by the Kabloom Park. So I want to wish them Godspeed, God mercy, as they prepare to funeralize their loved one. Thank you.
Counsel Recupero? Did you want to mention a moment of silence for someone?
I'd like to have a moment of silence for my brother-in-law. He died, John Wesley Fair. He died a couple of days ago.
At this time, I'll also mention, in the last week, we've had some several shootings across this country, unfortunately, and also, again, an incident in Minneapolis that is causing, again, civil unrest. And I just pray for this country, both to have some sensibility when it comes to guns and also when it comes to police use of force. If we all have a moment of silence, please stand up. Thank you.